Good morning, DeKalb County. I'm Robert Patrick and have the dual honor of serving as both the District One Commissioner and the Presiding Officer of the DeKalb County Board of Commissioners. To my colleagues, welcome to our regular meeting of the DeKalb County Board of Commissioners Committee of the Whole for May 3rd. Sort of in line with the CEO's State of the County address from last week, our CEO has a presentation or request to discuss something with us. And with that, Mr. CEO, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Good morning, Board of Commissioners. And first, let me just thank all of you all for the support of our State of the County event. And throughout my administration, I think we acquitted ourselves well in demonstrating that we are making progress as a governing authority. And I'm just delighted to have the opportunity to continue to serve with you all as we meet many of the most significant challenges. COO Williams is preparing a resolution that will be shared with the Commissioners. He's not quite here yet, but as we spoke earlier, late last, middle of last week, we are presenting a proposal, a resolution for your consideration for us to enhance and strengthen our, particularly our violence interruption strategies. Like you, and more recently, the events that occurred, can we share the resolution, Mr. Williams? The events that occurred at the Golden Glass Skating Rink was just the most recent example of a senseless violence in our community, where one young man was seriously injured, continues to fight for his life. He was 11 years old. Thanks to the outstanding work of our law enforcement officials, DeKalb PD, Sheriff's Department, and other public safety agencies, they were able to make an arrest in this particular case. But as was stated at the press conference, Chief Ramos, it was not a day of celebration typically it would be. Because as was unfolded, as was told, that the perpetrator, alleged perpetrator in this particular event was a 13-year-old. And as we move forward into the summer, when the temperature rises, we know unfortunately, just through historical analysis, there's generally an uptick in violent crime and unfortunately homicide as well. Putting it all in perspective, and I know Director Lumpkin and Chief Ramos are on the call, and I'll defer to them for more detailed information or to answering the question you might have. You know, homicides have not skyrocketed in DeKalb, and that's a great thing. And that's the result of our public safety team led by our loyal and committed DeKalb Police Department. But also, we have to obviously acknowledge the work of the DA, the solicitor, the courts, probation office, juvenile court, the investigators who are sworn in to various agencies working collaboratively. And consequently, at DeKalb, if you look year over year, you find that contrary to what you might believe, that actually homicides are down just a tad in our county, just a small amount. So we are fortunate that we've not had a third or 40% uptick in homicides in DeKalb. But that's due to the work of the men and women in uniform and their public safety partners. It's also due to the fact that this Board of Commissioners. Every time we bought a strategy that was designed to enhance and support public safety, each time we've done it, you all have stood strong and committed in supporting our men and women in uniform. Just one of the more recent things that were voted upon in our FY '22 budget was a $3,000 bonus for all sworn personnel, public safety personnel in DeKalb County. There's police, there's fire, and that's in the sister agencies and the brother agencies. And I believe that our chiefs and other department heads just late last week announced to their men and women who follow them that these bonuses will be paid on May 6th of this week, or at least at the next pay period. So we're proud of that. So we're investing in public safety, all public safety personnel. And this is the second $3,000 bonus that we collectively have appropriated for public safety. But now we have to move forward and invest in what is known, what we call, what you all recognize as violence interruption strategies. To that end, we will be submitting for your consideration a agenda item to appropriate $1 million to support existing community-based programs to reduce violent crime. The reality is, there are hundreds of nonprofits, churches, community organizations who have been laboring in the vineyard for years, scrapping together nickels and dimes sometimes, dollars and quarters, to invest in our young people and to invest in our community. The uniqueness of this strategy is that it's not necessarily create new programs, new strategies, but it is to enhance existing strategies and to support those organizations who you know in your own districts, because you've worked with them over the years, and you may have already appropriated money to support them over the years, have been out there doing everything they can. And so what we want to do is to help those who've already earned the right of service, of support from this county. I ask for your consideration, and hopefully over the next, and I'm not sure what the protocol is, but as expeditiously as possible, once all questions are answered and inquiries are responded to, that we would do this, the summer is closed, school is closing, and we have to be aggressive in continuing, number one, to support public safety, which we have done just this week, but also to invest in violence interruption strategies that will support and keep our young people safe. You know, it's hard to quantify and document things that don't happen. But I'm convinced that if we will do this, well, and even if we don't, what we will know is this, is that we tried, that we made the investment, and we aggressively went about the task of trying to protect our young people and to keep them safe from violence. And you know, the gangs are recruiting, but heck, we got to recruit harder for those young people and to redirect them from lives of crime and violence and senseless death. So with that, Mr. Presiding Officer, I'll stop. And if there are any questions, I'll try to answer them. But thank you all for giving me this opportunity.
All right, Mr. CEO, thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions, comments? Commissioner Rader?
Thank you, Commissioner Patrick, and thank you, CEO Thurman, for your presentation. I was just wondering, several months ago, we had funded through American Rescue Plan funding some work by John Jay College on a related topic. And I was wondering if you could give us an update on that work.
That work is still ongoing. As you know, we're in the midst of a pandemic, and it's been a challenge to get it started. But I'll defer the call to Director Lumpkin and Chief Ramos to speak more specifically about it.
I'd like to hear that. Thanks.
I think he's muted. There you go.
Good morning, good governing authority, Mr. CEO and the governing authority. One of the components of the John Jay element is to bring people together as we work towards preventing violence and the violent interruption strategy is to have significant large meetings and to engage the individuals that we believe are maybe involved in violence face to face. Obviously, during the pandemic, that model does not lend itself to working. The other strategies in terms of actually having shooting reviews, reviewing the homicides that have occurred in DeKalb over the last two to three years, reviewing the shots that struck individuals, those things have occurred. And the Police Department is continuing to actually have those shooting reviews with the prosecutors as they try to identify and isolate and eliminate those individuals who are causing that harm. The John Jay also raised their cause for this particular project. And if we get back into it, once we can engage individuals in group settings, it could be more effective. At this point, one of the main points of it is not doable in terms of the pandemic problems.
Thanks. I was just, just to follow up, I was wondering how this instant initiative that the CEO is going to propose with Mr. Williams' new resolution or legislation, how those two would inform or work with each other in order to address this critical issue?
In the John Jay model, a significant element is community support. Community is key to crime prevention. It's a shared responsibility. That's the model, and that's the model across the country. And the community has been great in DeKalb County in terms of assisting the DeKalb County Police Department in solving crime. What I think we're trying to do at this point in the violence interruption strategy is increase the community's capacity to prevent crime, to actually engage individuals who may be leaning in that direction and to prevent those young people from going towards the gangs who, as the CEO said, are actively recruiting all the time. This provides additional resources for community health groups that are designed to actually prevent individuals from moving to criminality and give them some means of engaging positively. I think it can merge very well with John Jay if we could get John Jay back off the ground.
Thank you. And just for one other question, and then, you know, perhaps we can discuss it more as the paper emerges. One of the areas where it seems as though we do see some regrettable and perhaps predictable violence is where we have domestic violence incidents, and there is some intercession by public safety in an initial encounter. But it may occur again and may ultimately escalate potentially to deadly force. And I'm wondering, will we be looking at ways to try to interrupt the escalation of violence, whether it is in a, you know, a domestic violence situation or perhaps a confrontation or conflict that is in a schoolyard that may escalate as a result of retaliation or other means of being able to sort of advance a more comprehensive response to a perhaps minor incident that we are confronting, that we know that by virtue of the research, that we may ultimately see an escalation at a subsequent point?
Certainly, we know from research over the decades that domestic violence is an incubator of violent crime. Children are born striking hidden. That's a learned behavior. The domestic violence prevention also, and for the long term, depends upon a community shared responsibility for other individuals in the family or acquaintances understand those concepts much better, that those things are occurring, they know. The police typically will make the arrests in the individual. But there are, as you know, the courts and others have been shut down for the last two years, and we are backed up in that regard in terms of what, those cases being disposed of and those actual helpful things being brought to the victims to assist. The advocates, one of the things that the Police Department, that you all funded this year, was advocates for the Police Department. Typically, district attorneys, prosecutors have always, not always, but have had advocates for a period of time. The advocates once owned in the Police Department, I think, and the chief can speak better how she will use those, but will a very small percentage of known incidents actually go to prosecutors? Because we don't arrest every person who commits aggravated assaults on a victim. We don't, and the volume really is at the Police Department level as opposed to the prosecutor's level. I think if I remember correctly, it's a 90 percentile type of thing, still at the police department's level. So the advocates, I think, will make a difference in terms of identifying those that are in critical need of services and actually providing significant referral services. One of the most dangerous periods of time for a victim is once an arrest has been made. And what occurs then if the person is bonded out and essentially a high, high percentage of individuals are actually bonded out and the victims are feel threatened at that point?
Thank you. Obviously, we can discuss more of this later, but I yield back.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Rader. Next, I see Commissioner Larry Johnson, followed by Commissioner Ted Terry.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, and thank you, Mr. CEO. The approach with the $1 million investment is part of a multi-pronged strategy as we deal with violence. And I tell people all the time, it's about education, it's about the environment modifications, enforcement, that's the law part, and it's about empowerment. And so part of what we have to do is tell the whole story, and that's what I think you're doing. Just because it doesn't have violence prevention attached doesn't mean that we're not approaching it from a multifaceted approach. I mean, having 800 jobs for young people, if we look at the research, poverty plays a very key role in having a job will help keep folks out of trouble. The other part is I had a chance to go to a STRIDE program with our district attorneys, with folks who were given a second chance, and getting back into life and with life skill training and all that. That's another program that DeKalb is doing. You had the PALS program, you had the Leadership Academy program, you had a program through Human Services. The parents are the first teachers, and we can never forget that. Government is not the first teacher. Parents are the first teachers. And that program is going strong in Human Services. We started some years ago in Clarkston with early learning and working with Roberta Malavenda United Way. And thank goodness, Commissioner Bradshaw has helped to push that program even more. Commissioner Terry's come on because he understands it as well. But we have to make sure that the center of all of this, what we do, the place where people are the most is in the community 24/7. And so whatever strategies we come up with, and I've talked to Zach about this in the past, we must train more residents around conflict resolution and management. That has to be a key component. So, Mr. CEO, I know some of the nonprofits may have that community component. Well, we don't have to sit close together, but we can be six feet, 12 feet apart. But we have to have some sense of responsibility on every key aspects, from faith community, neighborhood groups, the county, public safety, and just try to get in the mix. I mean, if you look at the research, domestic violence did go up the last two years in the pandemic and child abuse. Folks were locked down, and so do we really think that it ended once the pandemic was over? No, it was exacerbated. And so now those folks who are beating or abusing are now still doing it. And so I like your approach. I think it's part of a multifaceted, pronged approach around public health and violence prevention. We just have to bring meeting of the minds together with different sectors, multi-sectors, to make sure that everybody's on the same page. Because I remember, I don't know, a lot of you was here, but about 15, 16 years ago, I remember a 13-year-old had shot a young man at the package store in Atlanta, and the guy went to New Birth, and there was a big uproar about the 13-year-old who killed. So I'm just, the violence that we're dealing with is not going away, is not new. But we have to make sure, what you said in your State of the County, we can't just deal with the symptoms, we got to get to the root. I mean, we can throw all the money we want to at this issue, but we don't get to the root of the problems. We'll be back here with some more, you know, news and other things are going on. So violence is a vicious cycle, and we have to make sure eradicate it. And I think what you're doing with this step will bring attention to it, but also some funding. But it's going to take more than just money to solve this problem. It's not going to be having a lot of police on the street. It's going to be us working with the community and key groups and youth groups, get them engaged, young people, I mean, high school, captains of the football team, the basketball team, lacrosse team, all of them are leaders. Bring them all into the process at the beginning. And I guarantee you, we can do some things in social media as well. Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, and I look forward to seeing the proposal embedded in more in the committee. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Larry Johnson. Next is Commissioner Ted Terry.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, and thank you, Mr. CEO, for the presentation. I certainly look forward to working on this. I think whenever it's ready, I guess as an agenda item, let's, you know, bring it to the ERPS Committee, and we can, you know, work on it, you know, as soon as we can, you know, as soon as possible to get on the agenda, to move it forward. So I want to support, you know, that effort. And we're here, I think, Commissioner Rader or myself, Commissioner Bradshaw, to work on these public safety issues this year. So please let us know how we can engage on that. I think you saw my email, Mr. CEO, I was saying a million dollars isn't enough, but it's a great start and a good down payment, I think, on a really important and really important issue and a really discouraging one to read about in the news every week, and what's happening not just in metro Atlanta, but across the nation. I will take a moment to, you know, remind all of us that something we already know is that the common denominator in a lot of these aggravated assaults or murders is guns. And violence is not something that does not exist in other parts of the world, but in other parts of the world, if a bar fight takes place, it might end with a bloody forehead instead of a gun being pulled. Just the reality of it. And now that we live in a, what I'm calling the criminal carry state, now anyone can carry a concealed handgun without a permit. So the proliferation of guns on our streets, the proliferation of what law enforcement referred to as crime guns, guns that are stolen out of people's cars or vehicles, boxes, homes, or trafficked across state lines because they're stolen from other places or they're bought in other states that have less restrictive state gun laws on their traffic into our state or even out of our state into other places. So we're always going to be fighting an uphill battle here because guns are everywhere. And we saw that even during the pandemic. The probate court asked for an additional staff person to process marriage licenses and gun permit licenses. And the stats didn't show that we had a bunch who would get married during the pandemic. A bunch of people got guns during the pandemic. So just, you know, think about just the doubling up the number of permitted guns out there, and now everyone's packing. And this is a real problem, and it's not something that we, quite frankly, we can't do anything about because it's state preemption. So we just have to do the best we can to address, you know, a larger federal and state issue. So I just want to say that, you know, we stand ready to work on this. I certainly agree with Commissioner Johnson about, you know, working, keep pushing forward on the ideas that I think are out of the John Jay College School of, you know, I think there's still opportunities for us to do some of that work, you know, in the interim before we have like really, you know, sort of intentional big gatherings. And I do want to, you know, highlight that on our ERPS Committee work plan, one of the items that we have on there is looking at, you know, in essence, some sort of civilian-led or citizen-led kind of board or advisory committee. We talked about it being focused on mental health and, you know, police response and working sort of that side of the law enforcement, you know, piece that interacts with our mental health providers. If there's an opportunity to do something a little bit more fleshed out, I think, you know, DeKalb County is known for having very strong citizen committees with our community council, with all of our advisory boards. The one thing, the one department we don't have an advisory board for is in our public safety. And I think if we can look towards a community stakeholder model, I think that part of these answers to which we're seeking in this $1 million initiative, I think will be more forthcoming, not just this year, but in years to come. So thank you, Mr. CEO, and thank you for signing off.
All right. Thank you very much, Commissioner Terry. Mr. COO, if it's all right, can we add this to the agenda at the normal walk-on segment?
Absolutely, Mr. Presiding Officer. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, unless there's any other questions for our CEO, I'll say thank you very much, and we'll move on to the regular agenda. And with that, we will begin with Commissioner Terry, who will give us an update from the ERPS Committee.
Sorry, I was refilling my coffee. What'd you say?
If you wouldn't mind giving us your update from the ERPS Committee?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Okay, very good. Yes. So good morning again, everyone. We had our ERPS meeting on April 19th, two weeks ago. Commissioners Bradshaw and Rader were present. We had a presentation and discussion with our Fire Marshal and Chief Lobby and Chief Fulham. And so we just, you know, reviewed several statistics related to, well, we talked about the presentation the previous week about the house fires and mishaps there. We also discussed some key things related to our planning and sustainability departments and acknowledging that we're currently looking at two additional, or I guess there's two reviewers currently working for some of the departmental requests, and we're looking at expanding those. So yeah, just wanted to flag that because I know we wanted to get a follow-up from CO Williams and Director Baker on that. But I think good news is that, you know, Sam Street is going to have additional space and potentially, I think, capacity to address permits and the Fire Marshal portion of that. And sorry, I've got people working on my foundation. It's, they're digging a trench and sealing the foundation. So excuse that background noise. We did talk about getting some regular updates, just like on the quarterly basis for kind of key, you know, fire-related issues. We acknowledge that there are apartment fires and single-family residential fires happening in all corners of the county, but we see areas that are more pronounced. And I know the department's working to increase smoke alarm distribution. And we also did discuss the International Fire Code, which has been updated at the state level, and there's still opportunities for us to potentially make it a little bit stronger here in the county level as well. We also gave a highlight to Theo Thursdays. And so I think we were encouraging Chief Fulham to maybe at a future ERPS meeting to bring Theo on the Zoom, if that's even possible. Dogs don't really hit us in the video, but we did want to keep getting updates from Theo Thursdays, our fire department mascot, and hit on social media. So wanted to make sure everyone was aware and following Theo on Instagram. Is he on TikTok? I don't know, but we got to get Theo on TikTok. So something I honestly didn't know about Theo, so I'm glad that we had that presentation. So I appreciate the Public Information Department on doing really great work to engage the community. Let's see here. Okay, yeah. And so we just want to continue to have that discussion about educational programs, talking about the fire stats. So CO Williams, I think if we can just, you know, work with the central staff to provide regular updates, that'd be really great. Appreciate it. We did have a couple of agenda items. We approved uh body worn uh camera systems. Um, can't remember if we voted on those or not, but um, so uh that was for um the marshal's office. Um, we also recommended approval of the um, the temporary personnel services um through the uh Halroy Wright Employment Agency. Um, so that was recommended for approval. We um deferred uh the item that we're going to be hearing today in ERPs uh from Commissioner Cochran Johnson related to the mandatory use of video surveillance systems at convenience stores. So we just ran out of time, Mr. Presiding Officer, so we'll take that up again first thing uh this afternoon. So everyone um join us for that, please. I think it's a important, important layer and uh strategy in this overall uh uh crime and violence interruption program. Increasing our opportunities for um video evidence to solve crimes. Um, we also uh approved uh the um the uh speed detection and video equipment for police services. Um, this is the Vigilance Solutions, and so these are plate readers, uh, but they're the plate readers that are actually on um the uh, the squad cars that uh travel and traverse the county on a regular basis. And so as a reminder, they're kind of like the flock cameras, but they're attached to the uh vehicles. And they're sort of are al- always scanning license plates to see if there's any stolen vehicles or other sort of warrants or other things out there that um might get picked up. And then we also did approve the uh public safety and first responder supplemental grants um that came from, I think it was the state. Um, and so this is uh two million fifteen thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars. Um, that's being distributed across the approximately two thousand public safety employees in the governing authority. So I'm very happy to approve that one. And then we did defer the item on the Speed Zone Radar Permit Application. And I, and we did, so we deferred it. There are just a few questions related to some areas that might not need to be on the list anymore. Um, uh, I mentioned the Hooper Elementary, which, you know, was listed as a school zone, but currently is not a school. So that was just one flag that I noticed. And then I think Commissioner Raider, you had brought up um a few areas on Crestline. And so uh we have to kind of work out some of those discrepancies. So I think, Mr. Williams, I think we're just looking for um maybe additional discussion this afternoon in ERPs. And I, you know, I know we had a, a deadline and there's some, some things that have to be done in order for this list to be updated in a timely manner. So we're just looking for a strategy, if there's a way for us to, to address any of these things that are brought up at the committee. Uh, and if not, then we just, you know, we just get on the schedule for, you know, a, a further fuller update for the next opportunity to do this, uh, required um speed uh radar uh permit application uh with Georgia Department of Transportation. And with that, we have a pretty full agenda today in ERPs. So invite everyone to join us um after the Ops meeting uh at two fifteen. Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Uh, next we'll hear from the PEX chairman, Mr. Pardon me, Commissioner Larry Johnson.
All right. Thank you, sir. I just need to mute myself. Uh, thank you and good morning again, the PEX Committee. Uh, had a full agenda and we focused a lot on, uh, we had an interview process for our sheriff to join the community service board. We approved that unanimously. We also had a congregant meal service uh that we do is a meals, Meals on Wheels program. And we got some great uh questions and, and we got great answers. And now we have moved that forward to the full county commissioner board. And we also had a Memorial Drive Corridor branding um proposal. And it's a proposal for the Memorial Drive Corridor. And that will be moving forward as well uh to our committee. And we talked about the land bank budgeting guidance for uh directing of the funds. It's already been appropriated. Uh, they are getting backwards in thirty days. Uh, they have an interim director, Mr. Chris Bell, and they are working on other positions. And we look forward to some action steps in the next thirty days um to find out where we are and where they headed because they have properties uh to expedite and to focus on uh in our, in our area. So I'm excited about the land bank authority. We also had a special call meeting on Monday, uh, to focus on our ten-year plan for our parks and very good discussion. And I, and I knew what happened, that we had some more questions that may come up. So I'm glad you uh deferred it, Commissioner Raider. And so please you all look it over and make sure Mr. Ellis and Parks and Rec with Mr. Hager that those questions get answered because we will be bringing them back before uh the PEX Committee. And I just want to focus on uh the responses and not have more questions may pop up. So we can bring it to the full board for a vote because this is a fluid document. We don't have to have everything in it, but we do need to have a template, a roadmap. And this gives us a roadmap for what we want to see in our parks uh in the future. So, Mr. Presiding Officer, that concludes my report.
All right, Commissioner Larry Johnson, I appreciate the update. And next we'll hear from the Fab Committee Chair, Commissioner Raider.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick. Um, the Fab Committee met on uh Tuesday, April twenty-sixth. Um, we recommended uh approval of two items for uh the uh Victims of Crime Act uh grants from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council uh after confirming that uh matching resources were available in departmental budgets. We also uh heard responses or uh reports on uh two audit items um related to the purchasing system process update and on uh code compliance. Um, and uh we did not, we're not able to get to uh further discussion on our watershed refinancing uh debt offering, which still remains um uh an outstanding issue in an environment of rising interest rates. Um, and financial statements were also uh deferred to the next meeting. I was not able to attend uh the last item on the agenda, but uh Commissioner Cochran Johnson and Larry Johnson heard uh the report on um the code compliance area and uh adjourned the meeting at uh five thirty. So thanks very much, and I yield back.
All right. Thank you very much, Commissioner Raider. Um, with that, I think we'll move on into the next uh segment of our agenda, which is uh Mr. COO. I believe this is the review of the proposed executive agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer and members of the board. I'd like to present the proposed executive agenda for May tenth, uh, beginning with uh public hearing items. Uh, for Public Works Transportation, we have a series of traffic calming petitions, a total of three. The first Lullwater Road between North Decatur Road and the Byway, cost to the county forty-four thousand two hundred thirty dollars. Second is Stone Lee Hill Road between Redan Circle and Turn, and Toonbridge Wells Road at no cost to the county. And the third is Snap Finger Lake Drive, Wesley Bend and Horseshoe Court off Snap Finger Road. Cost to the county is twenty-nine thousand three hundred and thirty dollars. Those are all public hearing items. Followed by a proposed appointment. Uh, this is actually a reappointment uh to the Regional Emergency Services Council, District Three, Dr. Michael Carr, no cost to the county.
Uh, just for clarification on reappointments, do those typically go through committee again, or is that a consent item?
Most, most often they go to consent, but it's whatever the committee chair prefers.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, is consent okay?
Is this, what, what committee is that?
Uh, this is ERPs, Chair Terry.
Okay, and I don't think I, I don't think we've done one of these before, have we? Which, which one is um appointment, emergency council? Did we already do one? Did someone else?
Not that I can recall, um, since, certainly not since you were ten years chair. So if you'd like to meet Dr. Carr or, you know, whatever your preference is, sir.
Yeah, let's, let's do that just because I haven't done this yet. I'd like to get this up to speed, but um, yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
So we will have that uh as a committee item. Proposed preliminary items. There are a series of four from the airport. First is termination of standardized teehanger lease agreement with Dean L. Gamble, no cost to the county. Second, proposed sale of permanent easement to Atlanta Gaslight, a county owed property located at DeKalb Peachtree Airport, at no cost to the county. Third is a standardized teehanger shop space agreement with Skybound Aviation. Uh, followed by the final uh airport item is resolution to accept GDOT supplemental agreement for federal funding assistance associated with the midfield taxiway improvements, runway incursion mitigation at the airport, no cost to the county.
Okay.
Those, those items could go on consent.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Um, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, I was wondering if you might uh discuss the um supplemental agreement for federal funding. It will give us an opportunity um to discuss uh the uh improvements in light of people's um, you know, interest in uh the impact of improvements at the airport.
That would be fine.
So item fifteen, item fifteen thirty, we'll go to Ops, the others to consent. Okay, um, item for GIS Department, resolution to consider abandonment, abandonmentment of five hundred and seventy-seven square feet section of right of way at Claremont Road in Chambling. That would be either PEX or consent.
Consent, Mr. Chair?
Consent, bye.
And uh just for clarification, was there a substitute on that one, Mr. COO?
I'm not familiar with a substitute, but I'll double check.
Okay.
I'll send a copy to you, Zach. I have received one.
Okay, so there is a substitute. Okay, thank you. Next we have the purchasing and contracting items, starting with item number fourteen fifty-two, set for ERPs.
Okay.
And we can either go through them or each of the committee chairs can review and comment as appropriate.
Uh, let's go through them individually.
Okay, the first one, uh, request for proposal. Uh, media services for uh use by Department of Fire Rescue consist of integrated marketing services, communications and training, recommended award to the sole responsive, responsible proposer, Cat Media Inc., amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. And that's set for ERPs. Uh, and Fab, change order number one to contract uh ten eight nine eight nine nine.
We'll set that to the committee agenda.
Okay. Uh, and purchase and for Ops Committee, we have a cooperative agreement um for, looks like heavy equipment. Tilt cab nineteen, uh, a big truck, I'll say. And uh tilt cab nineteen thousand five hundred GVWR truck for use by Public Works Fleet uh for roads and drainage, picking back, piggybacking off competitively let statewide contract, help repairing and or replacing road signs throughout the county, cost of a hundred and seventy-six thousand eight hundred ninety-one dollars. Awarded to Rush Truck Centers of Georgia. That's a fleet item.
I think we can put that one to Ops and uh
Ops, next is
I think if you just read out the title, that'll be, uh, that'll be fine. Agenda item number.
Okay, item fourteen sixty-eight Harley Davidson, AP Harley Davidson. FLHTP Electra Glide awarded to Killer Creek Harley Davidson, amount not to exceed ninety-four thousand three hundred and six dollars and twelve cents for purchase of four additional Harley Davison's for traffic enforcement.
Okay.
Mr. Williams, I'll say the question.
Uh, Commissioner Johnson.
Yes, Mr. Williams, can you go back up to road signs? Do you know, do you have a, a survey of all the road signs? Because I see a lot of them that's faded and, and corroded. And I've sent you a couple of them. So you're just trying to do a subset or do, is this the, what's the total amount of road signs that need to be replaced? Like stop signs that are faded?
Yeah.
Because we should be moving towards the federal model on the road signs. If you look at Atlanta, they've already made them larger for people to read. And DeKalb still has the small street signs. And I know federal legislation says you have to be at a certain um spec of font size for all road signs. It seems like we still have the suburban road signs when you can't even read them. So are we moving towards that model? And do you have a survey of all the signs across the county that are bad?
No, unfortunately, we do not, Commissioner. And that is something that we have been talking about and, you know, kind of, uh, there's been discussion, kind of district based uh thus far. But we, we currently don't have that type of an inventory.
So, Mr. Chair, Terry, if you, you know, I know you got a full agenda, but at some point in the next couple of months, can you look at that because we have a lot of old signs and then we need to bring them up to the standards of, of bigger and larger signs for our streets. And I know we just piecemeal in the process with a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. I know all of us seen a lot of faded signs in our area, which could be a, a safety hazard. And it could be a lot of things, so just something to consider uh in the future, uh, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Larry Johnson. Just to add right quick, um, I have been speaking with uh, with Zach about that, at least in District One area. Um, lots of mildew or
Yeah.
something growing over all the signs. And then, of course, the stop signs are fading out where you can barely even tell that it's a red sign. So that has been a priority that's been on my radar. Commissioner Terry?
Yes, um, no, I just wanted to agree with what everyone was saying. And um, just to clarify, would that, would this um be under, under PWI?
So, so this, this item is for trucks that will be used to
Yeah, that's right, but to do the actual signs that were, the size, like, road signs would be us under PWI, right?
I'm sorry, I meant to say it's, okay, it's on the Ops. Sorry, Madam.
Right, right. This is just, this is the fleet component, this, yes, but the roads and drainage sign replacement uh project or evaluation and such uh would probably be PWI.
Okay. All right, we can, yeah, we can monitor it from there as well. Thanks.
Thank you. So uh, the next item, we've gone through uh the, the Harley Davidson for police in Ops. Um, the tire service um awarded to lowest responsive and responsible bidders, Southern Tire Mart LLC, Stedco Inc., Atlanta Commercial Tire, Action Tire, and Next Tire Commercial Inc., total amount not to exceed four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That's the final Ops Committee item.
Okay.
Two items for PEX, uh, Soul Source Playground Equipment Installation at Memorial Park. Awarded to Play World uh and the amount not to exceed one hundred ninety-three thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars ninety and sixty-eight cents. Uh, second item is a cooperative agreement for playground and outdoor fitness equipment. And this uh contrast consists of uh purchase installation of all things ancillary for playground and outdoor fitness equipment. Awarded to Compton Inc., amount not to exceed one hundred ninety-nine thousand six hundred seventy-six dollars forty-two cents. Those two items are PEX.
Yes, sir, same on.
Okay, and then there's a series of five items, I believe, for PWI. The first is renewable, renewal portable toilet rentals awarded to United Site Service uh of Georgia LLC, amount not to exceed sixty-one thousand dollars. Uh, the second Soul Source is of a twelve, uh, of twelve thirty-nine foot pump dump trailers by East Manufacturing Corporation. Um, amount not to exceed eight hundred forty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. Followed by a change order uh to safety shoes uh used by sanitation, beautification. And this is awarded to Safeguard Safety Shoes Company, amount not to exceed one hundred twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars. The next item fourteen fifty-one is a low bid, Ready Mix Concrete, uh, recommended award to the lowest responsible bidder, FM Shelton Inc., amount not to exceed five hundred sixty-six thousand two hundred forty-six dollars. And the final item for uh PWI is uh Simmo Road Landfill Cell Construction. Uh, recommended award to the lowest responsive bidder, Morgan Corporation, not to exceed, amount not to exceed twenty-one million one hundred eighty-five thousand nine hundred forty-three dollars and forty-five cents. And all, each of those items are for um, are, are for uh PWI.
Okay.
You know what, I believe that, and, and Mr. Chair, just before, Mr. Presiding Officer, before I go to the Parks and Cultural Affairs item, I think I may have misstated. We had this GIS item, the substitute, um, item fifteen twenty-six, I think that's a public hearing item.
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay. Okay. If we could just make that correction, I'd really appreciate it.
Okay.
Followed by a couple of items for parks and recreation. These could be either for consent or for PECs. The first item is the twenty, twenty-two summer food, food service program. That's an annual item where we provide summer food assistance to young people through various parks and not-for-profit organizations.
Can I ask a question, Mister Presiding Officer?
Yes.
Mister Williams.
Sure.
Knowing that school will be out once this gets on the agenda on the twenty-fourth, when is the first day this program starts, June first?
Scheduled to run from June sixth through July twenty-second.
So Mister Presiding Officer, I may have to put this on consent in some program that we've done before to feed our children. I just don't want us to wait until the twenty-fourth and then it goes back on us, because the kids will be out of school and the program will be.
Thank you.
I'd be approved, so that's something I'll pass on. But the next one I want to hear in the committee, fifteen twenty-four.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
But we also need to see the food sites, give them all the commissioners, so they'll know where they can refer people who need breakfast and lunch. And I've, and I've gotten one from a group who wants to feed our extended state families, and I hand it to Mister Phillips, so I hope.
Excellent.
I hope you all get that one, because I want to do something for our families in the area.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Johnson, and our team will ensure you get this list of sites in the next day or so.
Thank you.
The NH Scott item is going to PECs per the chair's request. The, the next item is Georgia Department DOT contract item, item agreement, water and sewer facilities project, bridge replacement at Covington Highway, Red Wing Circle and Glenwood Road, and estimate of two million, two thousand and sixteen dollars. That's a PWI item.
Okay.
And the final item, PWI item, it's an agreement for the construction and financing of sewer upgrades with Legacy Park South Housing Village, not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars.
Is there a substitute on that one, too?
Yes, and there is a substitute that I believe has been distributed.
Okay. All right.
Can I ask a question on that one?
Yes.
Now, the Legacy Park South Housing, that's the one that the old United Methodist.
I believe so, yes, sir. And it's an affordable housing project, Commissioner Johnson.
Will, will, will unincorporated residents be eligible, or is it just for the city of Decatur to be eligible for the affordable housing?
Let, let me find out, Commissioner. I believe I know the answer, but it's not the type of thing I want to, you know, to answer without absolute certainty.
Okay, I heard, I just want to hear from you. If not, we need to make sure unincorporated folks are eligible for that housing as well.
Yes, we'll, we'll have something in writing to clarify that before next Tuesday or before this item is up for vote. This is actually a sewer capacity item, much like we did with Pepsi. So we're excited to be doing this.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we have, you know.
Right, that it's open and eligible, absolutely.
Thank you.
We'll communicate that and we'll get something in writing to that effect.
Thank you.
The final item I have would be the walk-on that we discussed earlier.
Let's go ahead and move into the walk-ons. Thank you, Zach.
Thank, thank you, Mister Presiding Officer. And so I would like to walk on an item to appropriate one million dollars for community-based programs to reduce violent crime. And this is an item that was discussed at the outset of the meeting by the CEO, and each of you have the.
Commissioner Terry, let's see your hand.
Yeah, and if, if staff are ready, we can hear that in ERPs today.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner, any commissioners, any other walk-ons to add for our agenda? All right, seeing none. Let's move on to review of the Board of Commissioners preliminary agenda items. Of course, we've got fifteen fifty-three, approval of minutes from May three. We also have for Commission District Two, agenda item fifteen eighty-four, resolution confirming the dedication and acceptance and finalization, the acquisition of certain infrastructure and real property commonly known as twittens within the Druid Hills subdivision in DeKalb County and for other purposes.
Yes, and I believe that's a public hearing item.
Okay.
And so we will, well, we'll put it on the agenda, I think, and defer it to public hearing after appropriate, after appropriate advertisement. So let's put it on the preliminary agenda, and then we'll defer it to public hearing for six.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next item is from District Four, fifteen sixty-three, allocation to appropriate, not to exceed fifty thousand dollars of American Rescue Plan funds reserved for District Four. Poeta account number, that's there, to the DeKalb Volunteer Lawyers Foundation for the purpose of providing pro bono legal services to low-income individuals and families throughout DeKalb County and families impacted by COVID.
There's no objection, consent please.
Consent, okay. Next item is fifteen sixty, approval of minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting from April twenty-six, twenty twenty-two. Next item is fifteen fifty-four, request for additional fleet District Attorney, District Attorney's Office, American Rescue Plan grant funded, no additional funds required. Commissioner Rader, do you want to hear that one?
Sorry, just a second, and we'll get back to it. Is it the fleet?
Yes.
I don't really have much in the way of information in the agenda item on it. At the same time, does anybody have any information on it? It's just.
I see Commissioner Terry's hand is raised.
Well, I just wanted to flag something, because I believe that we've been discussing other ARP grants that involve purchasing a vehicle. And it's, you know, not against this request, it's more of like a kind of a compliance issue. Is, is there any concern that, from the legal department, the law department, that a vehicle purchased or leased under ARP money has to be returned at the end of twenty twenty-six? And I mention that because that's one of, I saw that come across some memo or some email in response to an ARP project for a, I think it was Habitat Humanity, wanted to get a van for home repairs, and there was concern that, that nonprofit would have to return the vehicle after, you know, twenty twenty-six. So I just didn't note that had already been discussed, or this is just a preliminary item and we just, we just need to work our way through the process. But I'm not against the item, just wanted to flag that.
Gotcha. Thank you, Commissioner Terry. I see Roz Harris with the DA's office has a hand raised.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. This is a procedural matter. We, we actually requested and were approved for the item when that agenda item was approved through the funds. Fleet just needed the language specifying that it was in addition to the fleet. This, this vehicle would be used for investigative staff. They have to have vehicles, they're law enforcement officers. And we do have several grant, federal grant funded vehicles from other grants. So it would, it would follow in accordance with the same procedures as that. But it's, this is strictly a language procedural matter.
Okay, well, we can certainly handle this then as a consent item, but I, Commissioner Terry's question is one that I'm aware of. And can someone respond to that notion that ARP funded vehicles have to be returned at the end of the grant period?
And I see Mister Phillips from our law department here.
Commissioner, we're looking at exactly how this deal will be structured, and we're going to make sure that it does comply. And I will speak with you offline about exactly what the nuances are on return of vehicles, ownership of vehicle, et cetera.
Okay, yeah, because this is an impediment in trying to use ARP funding to buy, you know, service delivery through some of our community partners, and love to figure out a way that we could use it for that purpose. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Commissioner Rader. Commissioner Larry Johnson, I saw your hand was up, but they got lowered. Any comments?
I just wanted to say, I know we approved a lot of the funding for the DA's office for ARP. I think we did it at the mid-year when they, when they had a bunch of requests came in. So that question was answered. Thank you.
All right. All right, Commissioners, again, unless there's anything else for the agenda, we'll go ahead and have Dr. Obang do the review.
Morning Commissioners. Starting off, we have public hearing items fourteen eighty-eight, fifteen zero four, and fifteen zero five. We have a proposed appointment fifteen eighteen that is slated for ERPs. We have airport items fifteen twenty-seven for consent, fifteen twenty-eight for consent, fifteen twenty-nine for consent, and fifteen thirty that is slated for ops. We have a GIS item fifteen twenty-six that is slated for public hearing. Purchasing and contracting, we have fourteen fifty-two for ERPs. We have fifteen thirty-seven for Fab. Point of clarification, fourteen fifty-six, was that for ops or PWI?
It was under ops. Is that the sign, street sign?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
It was under ops.
Fourteen fifty-six is slated for ops. Fourteen sixty-eight is also slated for ops. And fourteen ninety is slated for ops. We have thirteen twenty-six that's slated for PECs, and fifteen zero two that's also slated for PECs. We have fourteen fourteen that's slated for PWI, fourteen thirty-five for PWI, fourteen forty-six for PWI, fourteen fifty-one for PWI, and fifteen forty for PWI. We have fifteen twenty, Parks and Res that's slated for consent, and fifteen twenty-four that's slated for PECs. We have a watershed item fifteen thirty-one that's slated for PWI, and fifteen eighty-eight that's slated for PWI. For preliminary items, we have fifteen fifty-three that's slated typically for consent. Mister Presiding Officer, is that your will?
That's correct.
Yes, sir. And we have fifteen eighty-four, which will be a preliminary item to be deferred for public hearing. We have fifteen sixty-three that's slated for consent, fifteen sixty slated for consent, fifteen fifty-four slated for consent. And that is the wrap-up, Mister Presiding Officer.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Obang. The next item we have on our agenda for today, I believe, is an executive session. If I can get a motion?
Move to convene a special call meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we'll go ahead and move into the roll. Commissioner Rader?
Aye.
Commissioner Larry Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye on that as well.
Move to convene an executive session to discuss litigation.
Aye.
All right. Commissioner Rader?
Aye.
Commissioner Larry Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye on that as well. All right, Commissioners, we'll see you soon. All right, as the board moves into executive session. All right, well, thanks to all the residents that stuck with us through the meeting. I'd like to ask for a motion to come out of executive session.
I moved.
All right, there's a, and a second. We'll go ahead and call the roll right quick. Commissioner Rader?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right. First item, I believe. Commissioner Terry?
Yes, Mr. Presiding Officer, I have a motion. I, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve payment in the total amount of $150,000 to settle Jacob Allen's claims against defendants Cabir Salu Franklin Wilson and Taylor Smith in civil action number one colon two zero C V zero two four zero eight in the U.S. District Court, Northern District of Georgia. To resolve the claims against defendants Salu Wilson and Smith, the county will pay the total amount of $150,000 to plaintiff Allen and his attorneys in return for and conditioned on plaintiff's dismissal with prejudice of his claims against Salu Wilson and Smith and plaintiff's execution of a settlement agreement with a full and final release and waiver of claims satisfactory to the county attorney. The county attorney or her designee is authorized to sign the settlement agreement.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Bradshaw, for that second. With, unless there's any comments, Commissioners, we'll move into the roll. Commissioner Rader?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
And chair votes aye as well.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I'd like to add an item to the agenda to move a ground lease between Brookhaven and DeKalb County and a sublease between DeKalb County and the DeKalb Community Service Board for certain property located at 2660 Osborne Road, Atlanta. Tax parcel ID number eighteen dash two forty dash zero four dash zero six seven.
Second.
And before we move to the roll, call Mr. Matowski. I got a message that Commissioner Johnson's having difficulty logging back in. Could you resend the link for him? Mr. Matowski?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry. I am working that issue as we speak. Give me one moment, please.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Commissioners, I know we have a proper motion in seconds. If it's all right, we'll just wait quick thirty seconds on the chance that we can get another Commissioner on board.
Strictly speaking, Ms. Ernstis, this doesn't require a vote since it's during the during the special call or is, does it need to be specifically during the committee of the whole?
He is on now.
All right. All right, Commissioner Johnson?
Sorry, I don't know what happened.
No worries. Just so you know, Commissioner Rader has made a motion and was seconded by Commissioner Terry regarding Brookhaven and the CSB litigation.
Yeah, I just had a procedural question to ask the Law Department.
Mr. Phillips? Ms. Johnson?
Commissioners, we, we are requesting a vote to add it to the agenda.
Okay, if you would discuss that nuance with me afterwards, I appreciate it. Thank you, and my motion stands.
Okay. All right, with that, Commissioner Rader?
Aye.
Commissioner Larry Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
And chair votes aye on that one as well.
Now, I'd like to move to defer the item to our meeting of March tenth, or May tenth, excuse me.
All right.
Second.
Okay, proper motion in second. Call the roll. Commissioner Rader?
Aye.
Commissioner Larry Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
And chair votes aye on that one as well.
And that is for decision, I think, as an item for action by the board.
Ms. Johnson, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. The, the item we anticipate should be voted on at the next meeting on.
Perfect. Okay. Seeing no other business before us, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Thank you, Commissioner Larry Johnson. Can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Rader, thank you very much. By hands and eye, raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate your time. We'll see you soon.
Most people lose their vision from diseases like macular degeneration and glaucoma, not at birth.
With macular degeneration, you lose your central vision.
You have a blind spot right in the center of your face, so I can't actually see your face.
So even that little circle in which I could see became a big blur.
I was sixty-five when I first was diagnosed with glaucoma.
There were no symptoms. I had no headaches.
Three million Americans have glaucoma and half.
3 million Americans have glaucoma and half don't even know it.
11 million people in the United States have macular degeneration.
You lose mobility.
Independence changes your entire life.
So many eye disorders can be treated if caught early.
My husband tells me that I have beautiful brown eyes, and I don't want to lose that.
Make a plan today to get your eyes checked.
Visit brightfocus.org to learn.
And today, we're here to have a conversation with some of the women of the DeKalb County Police Department. Nationwide, women in law enforcement make up about 13% of the workforce. In the 70s, it was 3%. So in my lifetime, this percentage has only increased by 10%. In the DeKalb County Police Department, 20% of our law enforcement personnel are women. And today, in honor of Women's History Month, we are going to hear about why we do what we do in this profession, what drives us, and what keeps us motivated. Tonight, we will get a peek at the officer behind the badge. So let's begin. We're going to start with Captain Baron. So Captain Baron, you're only one of two female captains in the department. Do you feel that that expectation is different for you than it would be for someone else?
Good evening. I am Captain Yolanda C. Baron. I have been with DeKalb. This month, I'm celebrating 19 years. If I can add, Chief, one of the reasons that I've gotten into policing is that I always knew that I was called to serve. I grew up with a grandmother and a mother that believed in going out there feet and hungry. So while my friends was riding bikes, I was out there handing out food to the homeless. So I knew that I was called to serve, but I did not understand the capacity that I was called in until I decided I wanted to be an attorney. And then, as I began to see the things that was happening in my community as I grew up, I decided that I would serve better being able to reach people before they reached the criminal justice system. So that's just a little bit about myself. Now, in terms of the question that you're asking, no, I do not feel that there are anything different expected of me than what is expected of anyone else. One of the things that I love about DeKalb is that we work as a team. And each and every last one of us, no matter what rank we hold, or whether we are male or female, we are expected not to just show up, but be actively present and play our role for the betterment of the team. And I truly believe that that is why, no matter what we go through, we always remain a strong DeKalb. Now, I am grateful that there are no different expectations of me or different standards. Because I look at what I have been able to attain during my 19 tenure here, and I am very proud of myself. I look back 19 years ago when I stepped in these doors. I came in as a PO1 at East Precinct. And where I sit now, including your position, I am one of the top three female police officers in DeKalb County Police Department. And that speaks volumes for me in my life, because I know where I come from and I know what it took to get here. And because there is no difference in what was expected of me, no one is able to make light or diminish or take away the hard work that I put out to make it to this spot. So I am proud of myself, and I am grateful that I can truly say confidently that it has been to that for 19 years.
And you should be proud, and thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Recruit White, you are in the academy right now, so my question to you is, tell me a little bit about yourself and why are you trying to become a police officer with the DeKalb County Police Department?
My name is Recruit White, and I want to be a police officer because I enjoy helping people. And I've always helped people. I, um, I, I am compassionate about helping people. And I strive to do what I can for people. So it's been sort of a calling of mine, a desire to want to help people. And with DeKalb County, seeing how community, community-oriented people are, these police officers, women, men, it, it's a great deal to, to be a part of it and want to be a team with them as far as serving the community.
So even with everything going on nationally, you still feel that you can make a difference?
Yes, I feel like, no matter what's going on, I feel like we can bridge the gap between civilians and law enforcement and come together when they see us doing things for our communities.
Thank you. Detective Hoyt, and I probably messed that one up. You are the only female detective in homicide. I know there's a female supervisor, but you're the only female detective. So why homicide? And do you think that you handle investigations different than your male counterparts?
So I am the only female in homicide. I have been in homicide for three years now. And my true passion for homicide is I actually, I was a student at Georgia State University. And we lost one of our students to a homicide. He was one of my close friends. We played soccer together, both at Georgia State. So losing him and knowing what that felt like really pushed me to want to be a part of the homicide unit. Of course, once I got in, it was a lot of learning experience for me, but I work with some of the most exceptional men counterparts you could probably ever imagine. I work with a, a different range of veterans to new officers as well that are new to being detectives. And having them and leading me into the position that I am, I truly believe that without them, I wouldn't be in the position that I am and to excel the way that I do in homicide.
Thank you. Officer Carson? Tell me a little bit about yourself.
Hello, Chief. My name's Officer Carson. I've been with the DeKalb County Police Department for six years. Four of those are, have been on the SWAT team where I'm currently assigned. I'm originally from DeKalb County. Actually went to Decatur High School, which is around the corner. So I just kind of gradually made my way back to DeKalb and wanted to serve in my community.
Okay, so, but you're not only in a male-dominated field. It's SWAT. I mean, you normally don't see females in SWAT. So tell us, why are you doing SWAT right now?
Well, I joined the police department to join SWAT because I wanted a career that was going to challenge me mentally and physically. And SWAT definitely does that. Physically, we put in a lot of hours, training before work, at work. But we also are like miniature detectives because we pick up cases from like Detective Hoyt, and then we do our own investigation and we try and create an operation so we can go out and get those suspects, so. That's why.
Now, do you feel that you are a different type of SWAT officer just because you're a female?
I don't feel like I'm a different type. I believe we all bring something different to the team, and that's what makes us such a great team.
Well, I spoke to one of your supervisors today. And they said that out of your whole training class, you did better than 90% of them. How does that make you feel?
Well, I didn't know that, but I definitely put in the work. I recently just had a baby, so she, she'll be eight months this month. And I knew I had to put in that extra work to show the guys that I still can do this job. And I don't want anybody to think that it was handed to me. Everything that I've accomplished so far, I've definitely worked hard and put in that work and
And here you are.
Results show, I guess.
And I don't think anybody's doubting that. So congratulations. You should be proud of your achievements. Lieutenant Bachelder? Do you believe that there's a difference between a male and female officer? And if so, what?
Well, thank you for the question. I am Lieutenant Bachelder in the South Evening Watch Commander at South Precinct. I've been in law enforcement now for 14 years. I actually started my career with City of Decatur Police Department and came over to DeKalb in 2013. Um, I do feel that there is some differences naturally. Physical characteristics generally. Women are not as same physical statues as male officers. But overall, I think male officers and female officers are in it for the same reason. They sign an oath to protect and serve the citizens in which the communities they serve. And in that respect, I don't feel that there's any difference outside of physical, more physical characteristics.
And I think you've had an interesting career. Can you tell us a little bit about the assignments that you've had leading up to you being a lieutenant?
Oh, yes, ma'am. So I, when I came to DeKalb, I actually started at North Central Precinct. I was on the road where I went to work on North Central's NET team, which is our neighborhood enforcement team. I worked there for a little over a year, and then I actually went over to Narcotics on a special assignment and subsequently ended up with a K-9, K-9 Rex, who's still around, my best bud. He's retired. Fortunately, I get to go to, go home every night to him and see him. From there, I actually, he was retired in October of 2019. Right at the time, I was able to take the sergeant's exam. I wasn't sure if I was going to be able to with his retirement kind of pending. I did take that exam, the promotional process. I ended up doing fairly well. I was promoted. I went to South Precinct, worked on day watch, evening watch, and then I was the NET sergeant. From there, I was, had moved over to the Training Academy where I was the in-service instructor sergeant. And I was there for a little under a year, took the lieutenant's promotional exam, and now I'm back at South Precinct.
So you have a little bit of experience under your belt?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell me what traits do you feel make you a good officer, and why is that important?
I think there's traits that every officer should have in order to be successful in their career. And also just to hold, hold the, I guess, the badge. You need to show up every day, ready to go, willing to do your job. You need to have integrity. You need to make sure you're doing the right thing, no matter when anybody's looking. You need to be respectful, and you need to be honest. I think if there's one thing I've learned, everybody in the world wants one thing, and it's to be respected. And if we can remember that and treat each other with respect and treat each other how we want to be treated, no matter what the circumstance, I think generally we're going to have a good outcome.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Sergeant Biggs? Can you tell me a little bit about yourself and what is your current assignment?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Sergeant Katina Biggs. I am, I've been with the police department for 25 years. It'll be 25 years in May, which is half of my life. I'm, I'll be 50 this year. I have an 18-year-old daughter who is serving in the military. She's in Korea, her first duty station. Hey, Kayla, I told her I'd talk, speak to her. I have, I come from a large family. I have five sisters, one brother. My mother, who still lives down in the little small town that I came from, it's called Bayana, Georgia. If you blink, you miss it. But that's where I grew up and I found my way to the big city in Atlanta when I was one day after graduating from high school at 18. So I came up here and when I turned 24, I joined the police department and been here ever since.
So it sounds like a lot of family, a lot of closeness.
Yes.
So do you find it difficult to balance your work-life and your personal life? And if so, can you tell me how you manage?
So my work-life and my personal life, sometimes it seems like it's one life. But I do have a good support system with my family, and I do have a good support sys, system with my family here at the police department. I talk to these ladies outside of work, inside of work, with my family. I find it that you'll always take some of the work that we do home with you. But if you find a fine balance of not letting it confine you as a person, that you can always make it to the next day where you are feeling like this is the first day of this job and I'm going to go on and on. Every day to me seems like it's my first day. I just love it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Officer Durham, can you tell me about yourself and your current assignment, please?
K-9 Unit. I've been with the department almost 19 years now.